We bring you back all the glory and praise in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you very much. The next is the calling of the roll. Do I hear a motion to dispense with the calling of the roll?
Mister Chairman, I move that we dispense with the calling of the roll.
There is a motion to dispense with the calling of the roll. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. At this point, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of the members of the committee. We have our vice chair, Honorable Dr. Marlesa Doc Marley Hofer Hasim from the Second District of Samboangga Cibugay. Comsec, please acknowledge our resource person this morning.
Good morning, Chair, Honorable Members of the Committee. In attendance for today's meeting are the following: From the Department of Health, Mister Glenn Cruz of the Health Facility and Development Bureau. Morning, sir. Director Analisa Duran, the Director of the Research Institute for Tropical Medicine. From the Department of Budget and Management, Ms. Hafsa P. Ambolo, the Budget and Management Specialist. Good morning, ma'am. And Ms. Nihal Abdullah Ruff from the Itbayat District Hospital of Batanes, Dr. Nikita Gato, and Dr. Allen Sande. Morning po. That would be all for now, Chair.
Thank you. Comsec. Good morning, distinguished members of the committee and esteemed guests. Welcome to the third meeting of the Committee on Health. I would like to thank the honorable members who are here in attendance today for giving your time despite our very busy schedule this week. Due to the very limited time available, I understand we are allowed to have our meeting up to 10 o'clock, so we only have about 1 hour and a half. So, given the upcoming budget deliberation, we are scheduled to start at 10, but of course, ginawan na natin 8 o'clock para ma-accommodate itong local bills which we will be deliberating this morning. So, in the interest of time, diretso na tayo sa bills to be deliberated upon. Unahin natin ang House Bill Number 174, entitled "An Act Providing for the Creation of a District Hospital in the Municipality of Ipil, Province of Samboangga Cibugay, to be known as the Samboangga Cibugay General Hospital, and Appropriating Funds Therefore," by Honorable Marlesa Doc Marley Hofer Hasim. Honorable Hasim, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, distinguished colleagues, a pleasant morning to everyone. Magandang umagang, masyadong magandang umaga. Access to quality health care is a fundamental right of every Filipino. Unfortunately, in many parts of our country, including my own province of Samboangga Cibugay, this dream remains out of reach. Today, if you live in one of our remote barangays and face a medical emergency, your family often must travel for hours, sometimes across several towns, just to reach a hospital capable of providing proper health care. For many, such delays can mean the difference between life and death. Sabi na ang ating mga kababayan, di lang kalayo ang problema, apil napod ang gastos. The distance is not just measured in kilometers, but also in the cost and sacrifice of ordinary families. Mister Chair, colleagues, the Second District of Samboangga Cibugay is home to almost 362,000 people. Yet our health facilities remain too few, too small, and too overstretched to meet the demands of a growing population. As a doctor, I have witnessed mothers who are desperately searching for a hospital bed for their child, and elderly patients told to wait because equipment was unavailable. This is more than a medical issue. It is a question of justice and equity. It is for this reason that I stand before you today to sponsor House Bill 174 and act creating the Samboangga Cibugay General Hospital. These legislative measures seek to establish a district hospital under the direct supervision of the Department of Health in the Municipality of Ipil, situated in the Second District of the Province of Samboangga Cibugay. This bill seeks to establish a fully-equipped hospital in the Municipality of Ipil, the provincial capital, which will not only serve its local residents, but also neighboring towns of Cabasalan, Naga, Roselerlim, Ciay, Titay, and Tongawan. By situating the hospital in Ipil, we bring health care closer to the people who need it the most, especially the poor and the marginalized families who cannot afford to travel far for medical care. This hospital will be managed by the Department of Health with full funding, staffing, and equipment to ensure it becomes not just a building, but a true center of healing for our people. This aligns with the Philippine Development Plan for Health, which envisions that by 2028, Filipinos across the country will live longer, healthier, and happier lives, supported by communities, workplaces, and schools that promote well-being, guided to make healthier choices and assured of access to quality health services with financial protection whenever needed. As a doctor, it has long been my dream to build a hospital in my district, one that delivers quality and compassionate care to every family, especially those in the farthest and poorest communities of my province. This dream comes from years of witnessing firsthand the painful struggles of patients deprived of timely and adequate health care. Colleagues, I ask for your support. It is time we give the people of Samboangga Cibugay the hospital they rightfully deserve. Let us make sure that when our constituents fall ill, their families will no longer have to ask. Asaman tamudagan. Because the answer will be clear. There is a hospital ready to serve them, right at the heart of the province. By passing this bill, we affirm that health care is more than a service. It is a promise of dignity and care that the state owes its people. Maraming salamat po. Daghang salamat. Umpadayun ta sa pagserbisyo alang sa bagong Pilipinas. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Hasim. May we now get the response from the Department of Health, Mister Glenn Cruz.
Thank you, Mister Chair, for this invitation. I would like to read the highlights of the draft position paper on House Bill Number 174. As soon as this is actually signed by our Secretary of Health, Dr. Chodoro Herbosa, we will submit it to the committee through its secretariat. The highlights state that, with respect to the directive of establishing at least one DOH hospital in every province, it is noted that Samboangga Cibugay currently does not have a DOH-managed hospital. So in view of this, the DOH supports the establishment of a DOH-managed hospital in Samboangga Cibugay, but with the following recommendations: That the hospital should be consistent with the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan. That the facility should not be designated as a district hospital. DOH hospitals are envisioned to function as referral and apex hospitals. By explanation, sir and Mister Chair, district hospitals are intended to be subsections of a province, and it is a primary hospital. So, DOH being mandated to do end-referral work, end-referral services, we are not recommending the hospital to be called district hospital. So the hospital service capability and bed capacity should also be defined by the DOH to ensure the alignment with the healthcare provider networks in accordance to the universal healthcare app. We need, and it must have, an adequate land area, basic utilities, and ICT infrastructure, or information and communication technology infrastructure, and also most important, transport access to support the future upgrading and expansion of the hospital. The establishment of the hospital must also ensure that the Sabangka Peninsula Health System retains full range of facilities under the province-wide health system. And since this is, in fact, it's a creation of the district hospital, more or less, we believe that the province-wide health system is protected from being compromised in terms of its service capability. So these are the highlights from the position paper, and as we said, we will submit it once signed by Secretary Herbosa. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mister Cruz. From the Department of Budget and Management, Ms. Hafsa Ambolo.
Good morning, Mister Chair. My name is Nihal Abdullah Ruff Pakalda.
Sorry, sorry.
It's okay, Mister Chair. Good morning, Honorable Mister Chair, Honorable Chairperson Congressman Gato, other members of the committee, and all others present. We recognize the intention of the bill, Mister Chair, as well as the other bills that are included in the agenda for discussion. As to the establishment of the hospital, we defer to the comments of the DOH pertaining to its necessity. On the other hand, further, we defer to the comments of the Department of Finance, particularly the Bureau of Local Government Finance in determining or establishing the fiscal capacity of the local government unit concerned, considering the provision in the Local Government Code of 1991 stating that "Health services is part of the basic services devolved to local government units." Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Nihal. At this point, before we proceed, you would like to acknowledge the presence of our other committee members. Honorable Gerald Galang of the Second District of the City of Valenzuela, Honorable Yuloyo Leyo Rodriguez of the Lone District of Catanduanes, and Vice Chair of this committee, Honorable Larni Levine Roque of the Fourth District of Bukidnon. Maraming salamat.
Mister Chair.
Honorable Roque.
Mister Chair, I move to approve the House Bill Number 174, subject to style and amendments, and as well as its committee reports, Mister Chair.
There's a duly-seconded motion that the House Bill Number 174, "An Act Providing for the Creation of a General Hospital" in the Municipality of Ipil, Province of Samboangga Cibugay, to be known as the Samboangga Cibugay General Hospital, and Appropriating Funds Therefore, is now approved. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Next is House Bill Number 287, "An Act Establishing a Specialty Research Hospital in the City of Valencia, Province of Bukidnon, to be known as the Bukidnon Farmers' Research and Medical Center, or the BFRC, and Appropriating Funds Therefore," by Honorable Larni Roque. Honorable Roque is now recognized.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Mister Chair, and to all our members of this committee. This bill is anchored on Section 15, Article 2 of the 1987 Constitution, which provides that the states shall protect and promote the right to health of the people and instill health consciousness among them. This is a provision that is not a suggestion, but an unequivocal command, for the state to protect their right to health. Yet for the very people who sustain our nation, this right remains a cruel impossibility. This measure is the urgent fulfillment of our moral and constitutional debt to the most vulnerable sector, the Filipino farmer. We are not simply requesting for a hospital. We are safeguarding the human capital essential for the nation's food security and economic survival. We seek the immediate and non-negotiable establishment of the Bukidnon Farmers' Research and Medical Center in Valencia City, Bukidnon. This will not be a typical general hospital. It is a strategic national initiative, operating under the direct control of the Department of Health and tightly coordinated by the Department of Agriculture and the Research Institute for Tropical Medicine. This synergistic structure guarantees that every peso spent creates a specialized center of excellence, not just a localized clinic. Bukidnon, the undisputed food basket of Mindanao, produces the rice, corn, and sugarcane that fuel our economy. The well-being of the 10.244 million Filipinos in our agricultural sector, which is over 20% of our workforce in the whole country, is directly tied to the stability of our GDP and the contents of every Filipino dinner table. Despite this vital role, our farmers are simultaneously burdened by the highest incidence of poverty and face unique fatal occupational hazards that our existing healthcare system ignores, such as toxological exposure, the silent epidemic. Chronic exposure to agricultural chemicals such as pesticides and fertilizers results in a predictable high lifetime risk of cancer, kidney failure, and cardiovascular disease. These are not accidents. They are preventable, work-related illnesses that slowly kill our productive workforce. We also have acute trauma, which is frequent encounters with venomous snakes. The snake bite is a critical medical emergency, requiring immediate specialized antivenom treatment. The total absence of this care in the region means that snake-bite victims often face death, amputation, or lifelong disability, a needless loss of life and livelihood. The cold truth is this: Due to poverty and a critical lack of access, we allow the very people who feed the nation to suffer and die from preventable, treatable diseases. The Bukidnon Farmers' and Research Medical Center is a definitive solution, serving as both a specialty research hub and an essential public hospital. This will be the first national specialty research and antivenom center. The facility will be the first and only center in the Philippines focused specifically on the occupational diseases unique to our farming communities and tropical medicine. The integration of the region's only antivenom center is a guarantee of life for agricultural workers. It immediately eliminates a fatal time gap in emergency care that currently plagues Mindanao. The high volume of specialized cases will generate invaluable national data for developing "Made in the Philippines" treatment protocols, securing partnerships with the Central Mindanao University, and leading innovation in tropical health. The diseases that the Filipino farmers face is unique in many ways, and there are still a lot of gaps in the management of diseases like filariasis, leptospirosis, schistosomiasis, and even those they acquire due to pesticides and other chemicals, sometimes leading to cancer. These gaps can be addressed by robust research effort right where it is most common, in Bukidnon. The output of such researches can eventually help farmers nationwide or even beyond our shores. The Bukidnon Farmers' Research Medical Center solves a profound deficit in government infrastructure. Valencia City, with a population of about 223,000 residents, which is the province's most populated LGU, currently has no government hospital infrastructure. Most of our residents must travel 21 to 27 kilometers just for the basic emergency care. For life-threatening trauma, the nearest high-level DOH centers are an impossible distance away of 120 kilometers to Kagayan di Oro City for the Northern Mindanao Medical Center, and approximately 162 kilometers to Davao City, Southern Philippines Medical Center. These three-to-four-hour travel times in a public bus for a medical emergency mean that patients, especially snakebite victims, are often dead on arrival. The Bukidnon Farmers' and Research Medical Center resolves this by providing immediate world-class care where it is most desperately needed. There is a need for a national-level hospital that will complement our existing facilities. We have no Level 3 hospitals at the moment in the whole province, and the provincial government is actually heavily burdened in maintaining the eight provincial hospitals. The approval of the Bukidnon Farmers' Research and Medical Center is a decisive action that aligns directly with the administration's vision, championed by the President Ferdinand Marcos Jr., the established specialized medical centers outside the national capital region. The passage of this bill is not an expenditure. It is a strategic investment in the human health of the agricultural sector, the food stability of the entire nation, and the direct well-being of hundreds of thousands of Filipino families. We are here today with an undeniable constitutional mandate, a clear economic imperative, and the moral duty to end the preventable suffering of our farmers. I urge this committee and its distinguished members for the approval of this bill to cement a legacy of decisive action and to finally give our nation's food producers the specialized health care they have earned and deserved. Thank you so much, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Roque. Before we call on our resource persons, we would like to acknowledge the presence of a committee member and Chair of the Committee on Energy, Honorable Jose Alvarez of the Second District of Palawan, our Vice Chair, Honorable Hil Kabarangay Acosta Jr. of the Third District of Palawan, and Honorable Jane T. Castro of the Second District of Capis. Maraming salamat. We now call on from the Department of Health, Mister Glenn Cruz.
Thank you, Mister Chair. With regard to House Bill Number 287, I would like to also deliver highlights from the draft position paper from the Department of Health, which we will be submitting to the committee through its secretariat once signed by our Secretary of Health, Dr. Chodoro Herbosa. So, the Department of Health acknowledges the intent of House Bill Number 287. And in fact, relative to this proposed measures, we would like to recall that, you know, that the DOH has developed the specialty care plan under the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan using a resource stratified framework, which specialties selected based on the top's, uh, country's top disease burdens, existing laws and mandates. It was reinforced by, in fact, Republic Act 11959, or the Regional Specialty Centers Act, which institutionalized 17 priority specialties in DOH Level 3 hospitals. So with regard to House Bill Number 287, in line with the directive of the Secretary of Health to establish at least one DOH hospital per province, the department supports the establishment of the DOH hospital in Bukidnon. We express, however, reservations in the establishment of a special research hospital, apex hospital, given the requirements for service capability and human resources for an apex hospital as will be cited in this position paper. And of course, on Section 4 of the bill, which proposes the creation of a Department of Research and Tropical Medicine under the RITM, or the Research Institute for Tropical Medicine, the DOH recommends instead of a department for research on tropical medicine be authorized, we recommend that an RITM enter into a memorandum of agreement and do also other cooperative arrangements with institutions such as RITM in place of that department. For us to hear further, if you would allow, Mister Committee Chair, I'd like to call on also the support and the statement from Director Analisa Duran of the RITM.
Thank you, Mister Cruz. Director Analisa Duran of the RITM, you are now recognized.
Good morning, Chairperson, Honorable Chairperson Gato, and Honorable Members of Congress. The Research Institute for Tropical Medicine recognizes and supports the intent of House Bill 287, which seeks to establish the Bukidnon Farmers' Research and Medical Center in Bukidnon. We affirm the importance of ensuring accessible and appropriate healthcare services for farmers and agricultural workers who face health conditions unique to their line of work and who form a significant part of the country's agricultural bone. While we agree with this vision of addressing healthcare needs of Bukidnon's farmers, we respectfully submit that priority should be placed on the establishment of a comprehensive health facility aligned with the universal healthcare law. Such facility would not only address specialized agricultural-related diseases, but would also ensure the delivery of preventive, promotive, curative, rehabilitative, and palliative services to the general population. At present, RITM is pursuing a modernization plan spanning the next five to 10 years, which aims to upgrade our facilities, laboratories, and service delivery to strengthen the country's capacity to respond to emerging and reemerging infectious diseases. So given these priorities, RITM's direct participation in establishing and operating a new specialty hospital in Bukidnon would be constrained by our resource and institutional focus requirements. Nevertheless, we express willingness to collaborate with a Bukidnon hospital once it is established with the Department of Health and DA. And this collaboration, which may include technical assistance, capacity building, and training of health professionals, as well as referral systems and knowledge sharing can be done by RITM for the Bukidnon hospital once it is established. So in conclusion, we support the intent of House Bill 287 to address the healthcare needs of Bukidnon's farmers and agricultural workers. However, we respectfully propose that the priority be the establishment of a health facility capable of providing comprehensive services. While RITM remains focused on its ongoing modernization agenda, we are open to meaningful collaboration to the hospital which will be established to ensure that the envisioned facility, once it is established, will truly serve the needs of the agricultural sector and the broader community. And we agree with the statement of the Department of Health that we can have a collaboration agreement on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Duran. Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of our committee member, Honorable Jesus Jess Marquez of the First District of Aklan, and Honorable Ivan Howard Eginto of the First District of Capis. Maraming salamat. We now call on Dr. Jose Ruel Delion of the Philippine College of Surgeons, Consultant Overseer for Health of the Province of Bukidnon. Dr. Delion.
Good morning, Mister Chair, and all members of this committee. I am here not on my capacity as the president of the Philippine College of Surgeons, but now I'm here as on my capacity as the advisor for health of the province of Bukidnon. And we have truly, we truly made a lot of study on this proposal, on this House Bill establishing the hospital. I absolutely agree with the statement both of the DOH and the RITM that it needs to be also a general hospital, but with a capability of research in line with the universal healthcare initiative of our country. However, we honestly feel that the possibility of a research institution within the province of Bukidnon, particularly dealing with the unique conditions of our farmers, would generate a lot of outputs that may be beneficial, not just for the province, but for the whole farming community of our country. And we hope that it will be data-driven, because we have a lot of cases in the province. And a future collaboration, both with the DA and the RITM, would probably, who knows, we might be able to generate a lot of firsts in the country if we will pursue this. But we absolutely agree with the suggestion that it has to be also a general hospital, so that it will also be able to address the need of the community. Because if, as mentioned by the good congressman, Because if, as mentioned by the good Congresswoman, the Province of Bukidnon have no DOH or national hospital. It has eight provincial hospitals, and it heavily burdens the province because, you know, many of you who have been in the local government knows how hard it is to operate a local government hospital. So we hope that for the passage of this bill, and we are very much willing to collaborate both with the DOH, DA, and RITM for any revisions pertaining to this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Delion. Motion?
Approval, Chair?
Motion to approve. Mr. Chair? Honorable Acosta?
Mr. Chair, having heard the need of the Province of Bukidnon, I move for the approval of the proposed bill of our distinguished colleague from Bukidnon, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded? There's a duly seconded motion that House Bill Number 287, an act establishing a specialty research hospital in the city of Valencia, Province of Bukidnon, to be known as the Bukidnon Farmer Research and Medical Center and appropriating funds therefore. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and for all our colleagues.
Mr. Chair, I also move for the preparation and approval of committee reports subject to style and amendment of the proposed bill, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded?
Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Ana York Bondok of the Fourth District of Pampanga. Next is House Bill Number 3376, an act establishing a multi-specialty medical center to be known as the Western Philippines Multi-Specialty Medical Center and appropriating funds therefore by Honorable Jose Alvarez and Honorable Hill Acosta Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that our explanatory note be adopted as our sponsorship speech. However, this bill, Mr. Chairman, have been introduced in the 17th, 18th, 19th, and 20th Congress. Palawan being the largest province in the whole Philippines is really in their need of a regional hospital. Although there is a law that states for a hospital in each province, however, in our province, it is not the center of Bimaropa. So that is why we are in need, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Honorable Acosta. Mr. Glenn Cruz of DOH.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With respect to House Bill Number 3376, I would like to read the draft position paper regarding this bill, which we will submit to the committee through the secretariat once signed by our Secretary of Health, Dr. Chodoro Herbosa. So we acknowledge the double intent of the House Bill Number 3376 seeking to establish a medical center to be known as Western Philippines Multi-Specialty Medical Center in Palawan. The DOH interposes no objection to the establishment of Western Philippines Multi-Specialty Medical Complex. But we further that DOH recommends the following, that in accordance to Republic Act Number 11959 or the Regional Specialty Centers Act, the seventeen priority specialties within the hospitals and that new specialty hospital should be proposed in the bill. So therefore, the provision in Section 3 of HB 3376 on the nonrequirement of a separate license does not no longer apply. In Section 6 of House Bill 3376, it provides that the DOH shall include the department's program, the establishment and operationalization of the Western Philippines Multi-Specialty Medical Center, implying that the hospital is proposed to be under the DOH. And it already actually confirms that based on the DOH mandate as per Executive Order Number 138 Series of 2021, that we are able to deliver the services of hospitals and other tertiary health services. Please note that the DOH already operates two Level II hospitals in the Province of Palawan, that's the Hospital ng Palawan, and the CSGH or the Kulion Sanitarium and General Hospital, both which are still ongoing development towards its Level III service capability. So other than, are no longer interposing no objection to the establishment of the Western Philippines Multi-Specialty Medical Center, we also recommend that it shall not be under the direct control and supervision of the Province of Palawan in compliance, again, as to the DOH's mandate of providing selected tertiary care services to at least the whole province and selected neighboring provinces in the region. So respectfully, to be submitted, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. From the Department of Budget and Management, Ms. Nihal Abdurahuf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We defer to the possession of the DOH on the bill, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abdurahuf. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Anong number to?
House Bill 3375. SRB7G.
Mr. Chair?
Honorable Roque?
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of House Bill Number 3376, subject to any of the style and amendments, Mr. Chair, including, of course, the approval of its committee reports. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Seconded?
There's a duly seconded motion to approve House Bill Number 3376, an act establishing a multi-specialty medical center to be known as the Western Philippines Multi-Specialty Medical Center and appropriating funds therefore. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. Congratulations. Next is House Bill... House Bill Number 377. An act establishing the Capis Medical Center under the supervision and control, supervision, control, and management of the Department of Health and appropriating funds therefore, by Honorable Jane T. Castro. Honorable Castro is now recognized.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, fellow colleagues, and to the DOH family, our ITM also here. So this bill, House Bill Number 377, wants to create a new and a modern hospital in Capi, or to be called Capis Medical Center in Roja City. So Roja's Memorial Provincial Hospital is the sole provincial hospital in Capis, and this is always full because it serves not only the people in Capis, but also in nearby provinces. So to solve the problem, the provincial government of Capis started building a new hospital in 2010, and this has a 280-bed capacity. And at present, the hospital offers services like outpatient department, animal bite center, the We Care Clinic, and treatment facility for HIV and AIDS, disease and control, also Capis Eye Center and the Dialysis Center. However, the provincial government of Capis does not have enough financial resources to finish the same and pay for the equipment and the staff needed to run it smoothly and properly. So this bill proposes that the DOH take over the new hospital because we believe that the DOH has the capacity and the resources to finish the construction of the new hospital, buy the best equipment, also hire specialized doctors, train nurses, and also for the additional medical staff. So once the Capis Memorial Medical Center will be completed and managed by the DOH, it will become a Level III hospital. And this means that we will have advanced medical services, and we can also offer new services like the training of specialized doctors in the specialized field. And so the new hospital will become one of the best hospitals in the region, serving the people from Capis, from Aklan, from Masbate, Romblon, and the northern part of Iloilo. So that this bill is crucial to make sure that the people from the Province of Capis and nearby areas will get the excellent healthcare that they deserve. So the immediate consideration and approval of this bill is our earnestly urge. Thank you.
Thank you. Just clarificatory question, Honorable Castro. You want, there's already an existing hospital, and you want it to be taken over?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it's not yet even complete?
It's not establishing a new hospital?
No.
It's putting the existing hospital under the Department of Health?
Because it's not also complete yet. The building started, 2010, and just...
So it's not establishment? It's the conversion or renationalization?
Yeah, more likely. The word is renationalization so that the DOH can take over. And because also we have the... we also want the much-awaited and much-needed oncology and cardiology department. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Honorable Castro. May we now hear from the Department of Health?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to read the highlights of the DOH position paper on House Bill Number 377. It is a proposed position paper that once signed was supposed to be submitted to the committee, once signed by our Secretary of Health, Dr. Chodoro Herbosa, will be submitted to the committee through the secretariat. But I would like to cite also that the position paper is based on the subject matter of the bill, which is about the presumption that this is an establishment of a new medical center to be called the Capis Medical Center. Because the DOH recognizes that there is a strategic importance of establishing a hospital, a tertiary-level hospital in Roja City, particularly to serve Capis and the northern sections of the region. But we are interposing no objection if the proposed establishment of a tertiary hospital is actually provided to be known as Capis Medical Center. But respectfully, I would like to request the Honorable Chair that we might work further with the committee through the secretariat on refining our positions considering the clarifications that is presented by the honorable author. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Honorable Ginto?
It's cited in the direction, Mr. Chair. The bill, well technically, right now, the RMPH is still not yet completed, the one that Congresswoman Jane Castro mentioned in Barangilanot. The bill is seeking for funding for the completion of the bill. And after it is completed, we would like to have it turned over to the DOH or to have it run by the DOH because the provincial government cannot sustain the cost of running the current RMPH. Technically, we have two. One that is, I think, a 100-bed capacity, 150-bed. The other one that is being built right now is a 280-bed, yet it is still not yet functional. So that's what really we're hoping, me and Congresswoman Jane Castro, to seek funds for the completion and then turn it over to DOH.
Thank you, Honorable Ginto, for the clarification.
Mr. Chair?
Honorable Roque?
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of House Bill Number 377, subject to style and amendments, including its committee reports, Mr. Chair. I so move.
Seconded?
There's a duly seconded motion that House Bill Number 377, an act establishing and renationalization of the Capis Medical Center under the supervision and control of the and management of the Department of Health and appropriating funds therefore, is hearing no objection, the same is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Rep. Ginto.
Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge committee member and President Gloria Macapagaloroyo of the Second District of Pampanga, and Honorable Nathaniel Odukado of Partilis Uantahanan. Thank you very much. Next is House Bill Number 4516, an act establishing a district hospital in the municipality of Pontevedra, Province of Capis, and to be known as a Capis District Hospital and appropriating funds therefore, by Honorable Howard Ginto. Honorable Ginto is now recognized.
Mr. Chair, my dear colleagues, good morning. Mr. Chair, it is imperative for the state to make healthcare truly accessible to all Filipinos. Medical facilities must not only be within reach, but also fully occupied and equipped to meet the needs of our people. Yet despite the constitutional mandate, the reality in our district remains a pressing challenge. The Baylan District Hospital, the only Level I government hospital outside Roja City, serves not only its own residents, but also patients from the neighboring municipalities of Panitahan, Maayon, President Rojas, and Pilar. With an authorized capacity of 50 beds, it has been forced to operate and implementing capacity of 80 beds. This translates to a 113% bed occupancy rate, far exceeding the World Health Organization's recommended 80% standard. Recognizing this situation, the expansion of Baylan District Hospital has long been one of my priorities. However, consultations with the Department of Health revealed that such an expansion is no longer feasible due to unresolved tenural issues. The hospital cannot provide the documentary requirements proving ownership of the land, which are essential for large-scale construction. Given these constraints, Mr. Chair, the establishment of a new hospital in the municipality of Pontevedra has become a necessity. This will significantly improve the access to healthcare for our constituents, particularly those in our district and neighboring districts and also nearby provinces such as Masbate and the Fifth District of Iloilo, which also cater patients. This measure therefore seeks the establishment of Capis District Hospital, a 200-bed capacity, Level II in the municipality of Pontevedra. Its creation will not only expand the number of hospitals' beds available for all Capisnon's, ensuring the patients in need receive timely and proper care, but also decongest all the private hospitals in the city. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That would be all.
Thank you, Howard Ginto. May I just ask, the proposal establishment of a hospital, will it be under the local government or under the Department of Health?
Under DOH also, Mr. Chair.
I was thinking about the name of the hospital because if we name it as a district, Capis District Hospital? Usually, it's a district hospital, it's under LCU?
Well ideally, Mr. Chair, we want it to be under the operation of DOH, but if... well, if the bill of Congresswoman Jane Castro passes, then it will free up some, what do you call it? Expenses of the provincial government, then the Baylan District Hospital can be under the supervision and the operation of the province.
So to avoid the confusion, we'd like... are you open to renaming it to another? Instead of a district hospital, say, a general hospital, or?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that would be possible also.
Can you put it? Can you manifest it?
Mr. Chair, I move that... Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that, uh, we can, uh, change the name of the bill perhaps into a general hospital, uh, so that it could be under the operation of DOH. So move, Mr. Chair.
We'll take note of your manifestation in the preparation of the committee report. Thank you very much, Honorable Ginto. We now call on Mr. Glenn Cruz of the Department of Health.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, right, for the position paper on House Bill Number 4516, an act establishing a district hospital in the municipality of Pontevedra, province of Capis, to be known as the Capis District Hospital and appropriating funds therefore. Um, Mr. Chair, this is a proposed position paper that's subject to, for the signature and approval of our Secretary, Dr. Chodoro Herbosa. Um, we will be submitting, um, but we would be, uh, we, I would like to manifest that we were also going to, uh, provide further consideration of the bill, considering that we have already stated our preference over the establishment of the Capis Medical Center, which is strategically in the location of Roja City in, in the province of Capis. But we support, uh, but it, uh, the DOH is, remains to be supportive of the establishment of this hospital in the municipality if it could be part of the province-wide health system, which is under the management and supervision of the province of Capis. Uh, but we are supportive that, uh, that a hospital can complement the work of the ones that the Capis Medical Center is established. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz, uh, from the Department of Budget and Management, Budget Management, Ms. Nihal Abdulhov.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we reiterate our position that we defer to the comments of the DOH. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Nihal. Honorable Roque?
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of House Bill Number 4516, subject to any of the amendments in style, includes, including the approval of the committee reports, Mr. Chair. I so move.
I second the motion.
There's a duly seconded motion that, uh, House Bill Number 4516, uh, be approved, uh, subject to style and amendment. Hearing objection, House Bill Number 4516 is now approved. Congratulations. We now move to House Bill Number 1759, in, an act increasing the bed capacity of Jose Lingad Memorial General Hospital in San Fernando City, Pampanga, from 1,000 to 1,500, upgrading its services and facilities and professional healthcare, authorizing the increase of its medical personnel and appropriating funds therefore, by Honorable Dr. Anna York B. Bondok.
Thank you so much for recognizing me, uh, Mr. Chair and, uh, fellow doctors, esteemed colleagues. Uh, thank you for, um, hearing our bill. Um, I would like to request the sponsorship speech just be placed into the minutes. And just a very short explanation. Uh, the Jose Lingad Memorial Medical Center is the regional hospital in Central Luzon. It has been increased, um, over the last 10 years from 500 beds to 1,000 beds and now, um, is now going to be hopefully 1,500 beds. Um, its lot located centrally in San Fernando, Pampanga, is already developed to its maximum capacity. We have donated in the next municipality a 2-hectare lot for the, uh, expansion, further expansion of the medical center. So I pray that, uh, we would act favorably upon this bill as we do not only serve the province of Pampanga, but we also serve the entire Central Luzon. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Honorable Bondok. Um, may we now, uh, recognize Mr. Glenn Cruz of the Department of Health?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, again, the position paper on House Bill Number 1759, uh, which is, which is about upgrading the Jose Lingad Memorial General Hospital, already, uh, one of the DOH retained regional hospital, regional hospitals in the country. Um, I would cite the, the relevant, uh, no, highlights of the, of the position paper that will be signed, uh, once signed by our Secretary of Health, Dr. Chodoro Herbosa, will be providing or submitting to the committee through the Secretariat. So in consideration of all the foregoing discussions about the, of the proposed bill, uh, the DOH fully supports the increase of the bed capacity of JBM LGH, uh, from 1,000 to 1,500 beds, uh, being a regional hospital. However, uh, in accordance with the guidance of the National Historical Commission of the Philippines, the DOH also recommends removing the word "memorial" um, from the proposed name of the hospital as it is already understood that the individual being honored, um, had been, has deceased. So, so, uh, so that we shall respectfully submit this position paper. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz, uh, from the Department of Budget and Management. Um, Ms. Nihal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We defer to the position of the DOH, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Nihal. May we hear, uh, a reaction from, uh, the sponsor on the, uh, deleting the memorial?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the support of the DOH and the DBM. And, uh, we are amenable to deleting the, the word "memorial." Thank you so much.
Thank you, Honorable Bondok.
Mr. Chair?
Honorable, uh, Roque?
I move for the approval of House Bill Number 1759, subject to style and amendments, including the approval of the committee reports, Mr. Chair. I so move.
Seconded.
There's a duly seconded motion by Honorable Roque that House Bill Number 1759 be approved, subject to the style and amendment and to the, uh, recommendation of Department of Health. Hearing objection, House Bill Number 175 now is now approved. Congratulations.
Mr. Chair?
Ah, yes, uh, Honorable, uh, Macapagalaroyo?
May I move that all members present in this committee meeting be, uh, considered as authors of, co-authors of that bill?
Seconded, Mr. Chair.
There's a duly seconded motion that all those present in this, uh, committee's meeting be, uh, made co-authors of the, the said bill. Hearing objection, the same is approved. Congratulations. And we now move to House Bill Number 2135, an act establishing in the municipality of So Good, province of Southern Leyte, a Level 2 General Hospital to be known as the Southern Leyte General Hospital and appropriating funds therefore. And, uh, House Bill Number 4269, uh, not upgrading the So Good District Hospital in the municipality of So Good, province of Southern Leyte, into a Level 2 General Hospital to be known as the So Good, So Good General Hospital, increasing its bed capacity, upgrading its professional healthcare services and facilities, authorizing the increase of its medical personnel and appropriating funds therefore, by Honorels Christopher Soncoco Yap and, uh, Honorels Ferdinand Martin Romualdes, Honorable Yeda Marie Romualdes, Honorable Andrew Julian Romualdes, and Honorable Jud Asidre. Uh, in their behalf, uh, we now recognize Honorable Roque for the sponsorship.
Mr. Chair, I move that the explanatory notes of House Bill Numbers, uh, 2135 and 4269 be considered and adopted as their sponsorship message, Mr. Chair. I so move.
Thank you very much, Honorable Roque. Uh, Mr. Glenn Cruz of the Department of Health?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are, um, and on my hand right now, I am looking at two proposed position papers, both, uh, respectively for House Bill Number 2135, which is about the act of establishing in the municipality of So Good, province of Southern Leyte, a Level 2 General Hospital to be known as the Southern Leyte Regional Hospital and providing funds therefore. And of course, the other position paper is for House Bill Number 4269, an act upgrading the So Good District Hospital in the municipality of So Good, province of Southern Leyte, into a Level 2 General Hospital to be known as the So Good General Hospital, increasing its bed capacity, upgrading its professional healthcare services and facilities, authorizing the increase of its medical personnel and appropriating funds therefore. Um, um, in view of the foregoing, based on the proposed position papers that will be signed by our Secretary of Health, Dr. Chodoro Herbosa, um, with regard to House Bill Number 4269, the DOH is supportive of the establishment of the So Good General Hospital in the province of Southern Leyte. Because it is consistent with the Universal Healthcare Act, provided that the hospital must have adequate land area, basic utilities, ICT infrastructure, and transport access to support future upgrading and expansion. Um, nonetheless, of course, the DOH through its Regional Eastern Visayas Center for Health Development still shall provide technical assistance and monitor its compliance to standards in accordance with the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan. But of course, we, um, with, um, House Bill Number 2135, the DOH expresses its reservation in the proposed establishment of a Level 2 hospital in the municipality of So Good. Recommends that the province consider upgrading one of its currently owned hospitals to comple- to complete the service delivery design. So with respect to this, uh, uh, no, the, the two bills, sir, these are the position, the highlights of the position papers that we will be submitting. Thank you very much.
Uh, from the Department of Budget Management, um, Ms. Nihal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We defer to the position of the DOH on the bill. Thank you.
One minute suspension. Please resume. Um, do I hear a motion to approve?
Uh, Mr. Chair? Uh, I moved, uh, for the approval of a House Bill, uh, 4269 and, uh, 3376, 2, 2135 and 4269, uh, subject for amendment and style and, uh, committee reports, Mr. Chair.
Seconded, Mr. Chair.
There's a duly seconded motion that House Bill Number 4269 and House Bill Number 3, uh, 2135 be approved. Hearing objection, the same is approved. Congratulations. We now move to House Bill Number 2496, an act upgrading the Eastern Vehicle Medical Center or the EBMC in Virac, Catanduanes, to a tertiary level hospital attached to the Department of Health and appropriating funds therefore, by Honorable Yoloheuleyo Rodriguez. Honorable Rodriguez is now recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, my colleagues, uh, the distinguished guests and the source persons, good morning. It is my honor and privilege to sponsor House Bill Number 2496, which seeks to upgrade the East Eastern Vehicle Medical Center, or ABMC, in the municipality of Virac, province of Catanduanes, into a tertiary level hospital under the direct control, supervision, and management of the Department of Health. This measure is firmly anchored in, to Section 15, Article 2 of the, of our constitution, which guarantees state protection and promotion of the people's right to health and sick, to instill health consciousness among them. This mandate is further reinforced in Section 11, Article 13, which mandates the state to adopt an integrated and comprehensive approach to health development and to ensure that health services are both accessible and affordable. Mr. Chair, Catanduanes is a geographically isolated island, province that is frequently exposed to extreme weather patterns. This condition make it exceedingly difficult for the, for many of our patient to receive quality and affordable healthcare services. Uh, this, this situation is significantly worse in the remote rural communities. Further confounding these, uh, challenges is the devolution of healthcare services which has created and institutionalized and operational impairments for ABMC. The larger, the largest government-owned hospital in the province has received limited financial resources for decades, resulting in chronic underfunding, personnel shortage, and administrative constraints, all of, all of which have, uh, ada detrimental in fact in public health and well-being. Under the able leadership of Secretary Chodoro Herbosa, the department initiative to encourage patient to seek medical attention from DOH's round hospital first reflects the Health Secretary border vision ensuring equitable, reliable, and accessible health services across the nation. A vision that gives hope to an island province that stand to benefits from fully equipped, adequately funded and sufficient stop the tertiary level DOH hospital, making the ABMC the first and only DOH round hospital in the entire province of Catanduanes. In light of these passing needs, I respectfully seek the committee's favorable consideration of this measure as we underscore the state's commitment to ensure that when it comes to health, no Filipino, even in a geographically isolated province like Catanduanes, shall be left behind. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and go, good morning again to everyone.
Thank you very much, Honorable Rodriguez. We now recognize, uh, Mr. Glenn Cruz of the Department of Health.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We would like to first, um, acknowledge, uh, the noble intent of, um, House Bill Number 2496 as introduced by our honorable, uh, Yolo, uh, representative Yolohe Rodriguez of the Lone District of, uh, province of Catanduanes. Um, the DOH still doesn't have, uh, a prepared position paper with regard to House Bill Number 42496. But we also would, we, we would like to know, we would be submitting the position paper once the, it is prepared, signed, and approved and provided, uh, to the committee through the Secretariat. We would like to also manifest, however, at this point that the province of Catanduanes notably doesn't have a DOH, uh, hospital yet and the, we, this will be, this will be reviewed accro- um, according to the policy directive of establishing one DOH tertiary hospital per province. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is a refile bill, so this is, this was, uh, approved already during, uh, 19 Congress.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Cruz and Honorable, uh, Rodriguez. May we hear from- Thank you, uh, Mr. Cruz and Honorable, uh, Rodriguez. May we hear from the Department of Budget Management?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As to the other substantive provisions of the bill, we defer to the possession or the study that will be done by the DOH. Uh, with regard to Section 5 of the bill, stating that the amount necessary for the initial implementation of the act shall be charged against the current year's appropriations for the Organization Adjustment Fund, uh, may we kindly, um, suggest that the committee considers, um, specifying the department under which, uh, the fund shall be initially charged. Uh, in this particular case, uh, we understand that we mean the Department of Health. So instead of stating Organization Adjustment Fund, we respectfully recommend to just state the Department of Health. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Nihal. Um.
Mr. Chair, uh, it would be my honor and privilege to move for the approval of the House Bill Number 2496 to the, uh, abaca capital of the Philippines, the province of Catanduanes, Mr. Chair. So move.
Second, Mr. Chair.
There's a duly seconded motion, uh, that House Bill Number 2496, an act upgrading the Eastern Vehicle Medical Center in Viracatanduanes to a tertiary level hospital uh, under the direct supervision of Department of Health and appropriating funds therefore by Honorable Rodriguez. Uh, hearing no objection, the same is approved. Congratulations. At this point, I'd like, I'd like to yield, um, the chair to the vice chair, uh, Honorable, uh, Hasim, for my sponsorship of House Bill Number 1953.
Good morning again. May we request our Chairperson Gato, the principal author of House Bill Number 1953, to deliver his sponsorship remarks.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, this bill, House Bill Number 1953, seeks to renationalize the Itbayat District Hospital in, uh, Province of Batanes and placing it under the Department of Health and, uh, renaming the hospital from, um, Itbayat District Hospital to Itbayat General Hospital. Uh, for those who are not familiar with the Itbayat District Hospital, um, President GMA is familiar with, uh, he has been there, uh, uh, my, our, my hometown, uh, Itbayat, Itbayat, uh, the island of Itbayat and the municipality of Itbayat is the northernmost uh, island municipality of the Philippines, nearer Taiwan than, uh, Luzon. And, uh, it takes, um, about three hours of travel by bangka if you want to transfer a patient from Itbayat to the nearest referral hospital, the capital of Basco, General Hospital. And, uh, the hospital there, the district hospital there has been there for more than 50 years. Bata pa ako, yun din ang hospital na pinupuntahan ko. Minsan walang doktor, kadalasan walang doktor. But fortunately, meron na tayong doktor, um, ang isang doktor, uh, iron, very ironic, kasi tagamin na now. Ang, uh, taga, taga, ang naging doktor sa Itbayat, um, at, uh, fortunately, uh, natagpuan niya ang kanyang, uh, uh, mahal sa buhay, kaya naiwan na siya sa Batanes. Uh, and now our provincial health officer, Dr. Alan Sunday. And at present, the hospital is now under, um, Doctor Nikita Gato. Um, uh, pamangkin sa pinsan, uh. So, uh, this honorable committee, um, I seek to, uh, seek the approval of the, uh, renationalization of the hospital because until now, a simple transfusion, hindi pa rin kaya ng hospital because of the meager resources of our municipality. At, um, uh, having been spent half of my life, I grew up in the island of municipality, island, uh, Itbayat, municipality of Itbayat, um, half of, my, my father is from there and I grew up in Itbayat. Uh, kaya, sorry, medyo sentimental mo. But I seek the, uh, earnest approval of the renationalization, the renationalization of the Itbayat District Hospital para naman maging capacitated and to provide the basic, uh, requirements. Yung nga, yung salinan lang, uh, I have a classmate, friends, relative na mamatay, literally watching them bleeding to death, uh, pag mag, nanganak or may mga accidente because we don't even have the basic, um, um, facilities for a blood transfusion. We have a hospital there, maganda naman ang hospital namin, but the facilities, the equipments are not there. And then we could not, um, uh, uh, convince the doctors to stay there, uh, because of the, uh, again, the, uh, the disparity of a solid grade of LLGU hospital versus a DOH hospital, so, um, in this light, uh, we would like to seek an approval of the, uh, bill, House Bill Number 1953. Um, Madam Chair, uh, at this point, I would also like, uh, the, the permission of the chair to, uh, um, allow our provincial health officer, Dr. Alan Sunday, uh, to, uh, manifest its support of the bill.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, for the sweet love story you shared. Honorable members of the House of Representatives, esteemed committee chair and members, good morning. I am Dr. Alan M. Sunday, currently the provincial health officer of Batanes. And for the past 11 years, I have had the privilege of serving as the chief of hospital of Itbayat District Hospital, the northernmost hospital in our country, standing at the very edge of our archipelago. I come before these hallowed halls to lend my voice in support of the renationalization of Itbayat District Hospital. Our hospital serves the topmost island municipality of the Philippines, geographically isolated not only from the mainland Luzon, but even from our own provincial capital of Basco. When seas are rough and skies are unkind, travel is often impossible. In these moments, our hospital is the sole lifeline for, for our entire community. This isolation has shaped both our challenges and our courage. Over the years, I have personally witnessed and performed procedures that other settings would be referred elsewhere, two cesarean sections done under local anesthesia and a number of appendectomies, and countless life-saving emergency surgeries. These are not merely stories of resourcefulness, they are daily realities for the people of Itbayat who deserve the same quality of care as any Filipino, no matter how distant their home. At times, availability of transportation and travel to Basco may take even longer than three months due to habagat and winter season. Because of our unique circumstances, the need to upgrade and strengthen our services cannot be overstated. Renationalization will not only sustain but enhance the hospital's capacity, ensuring adequate staffing, modern equipment, and stable funding so that no mother, child, or patient has to fear the distance from the mainland means distance from life-saving care. The building is state-of-the-art, designed for a level-one hospital in which major surgical procedures can be performed. Honorable members, this is more than a plea for resources. It is an affirmation of the right of every Filipino to accessible, quality healthcare from Batanes to Tawi-Tawi. I stand here today carrying the voices of the Itbayat people, asking that you consider the renationalization of our hospital as an investment in lives in equity and the enduring spirit of our nation's farthest north. Furthermore, it is worth mentioning that LGU Itbayat and the provincial government of Batanes have both issued resolutions expressing their full and unequivocal support to the renationalization of Itbayat District Hospital. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to help for all. I am very happy to answer your questions if you have any further questions.
Are there any questions to Dr. Sunday? Thank you, though. There being none, can we continue for the comments from our resource person from DOH? Dr. Cruz?
I'm Mr. Cruz.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, for the, uh, for the acknowledgement of the DOH, uh, the, the, the DOH position. The prepared, uh, draft position paper on House Bill Number 1953 is subject for reconsideration considering the, the circumstances surrounding the, the, the need for the, the legislative measure and it would be duly reconsidered once that the position paper has been finalized and, uh, reconsidered by the, by the office of the secretary and approved and signed by the Secretary of Health, Dr. Chodoro Herbosa, we will provide the, the, uh, the, the copy, the signed copy to the committee through the Secretariat. We initially, we initially had, um, difficulties in considering this because of the, uh, current policy directive of establishing one DOH hospital per province, knowing that the, currently, one of the, uh, Batanes is one of the provinces that has one DOH hospital. But we will shall submit once that, uh, all the points and, uh, the discussions have been reconsidered. So we shall, we shall submit at that time. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Um, we're okay with that, Congressman Gato. Now can we hear from, uh, our resource person from DBM?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we defer to the comments of the DOH as to the substantive provisions of the bill. Um, considering the manifestation of the resource person from the DOH, um, we shall await the finality of their comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we now?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, having hearing the plea of our good chairman and coming also from an island province, uh, iba po 'yung sitwasyon eh. Uh, although here in Luzon and in the mainland, uh, one, uh, DOH hospital per province is good, but like Batanes and Palawan, uh, pending the recommendation of DOH, Madam Chair, uh, regardless of that, I move for the approval of, uh, House Bill Number 1953, subject to style and amendment, and also the accompanying committee report, Madam Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Madam Chair, I second the motion. As Mr. Chair, that I have been there and it's really nearer Taiwan than, than even the capital of Batanes, so I second the motion.
Maraming maraming salamat, um, Honorable, uh, Makapagalaroyo and, uh, Honorable, uh, Acosta.
Second, Mr. Chair. Upon motion duly seconded, the committee hereby approves House Bill Number 1953, subject to style and amendments and comments of the committee on appropriations. Congratulations, Chairman Gato.
Congratulations, Chair.
Maraming maraming salamat po. Uh, thank you very much to the colleagues. We now move to add if there are other matters. Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of, uh, Jose Manuel Florendo Lagdameyo of the Second District of, uh, Davao del Norte. Thank you. So, if there are no other matters to discuss, uh, before we adjourn, we'd like to thank, uh, our, um, dear, um, colleagues in the members of the committee, uh, for the, your time. We know everybody's busy, uh, this week. And of course, we'd like to thank our different resource persons this morning. Special thanks to, uh, Dr. Alan Sunday and, uh, Dr. Nikita Gato, who flew all the way from Batanes, uh, via C-130. Uh, mabuti na lang mayroon C-130 na pumunta doon because of the typhoon that, uh, visited us last week. Uh, so maraming, maraming, maraming salamat for coming all the way from Batanes to, to, uh, express, uh, the support of this bill. And again, to the DOH family, uh, DBM, and other, uh, resource person. Of course, a Dr. Santos, Philippine College of Surgeon of the, uh, Buukinnon. Maraming maraming salamat at, uh, good morning sa lahat. Thank you very much, Honorable Acosta. Uh, any motion?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Seconded.
So there's a motion to adjourn. Uh, hearing no objection, this meeting of the Committee on Health is now adjourned. Maraming maraming salamat po.